Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Lakewood City Council meeting for Monday, March 21, 2022. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Anderson.
Councilmember Bell.
Here.
Councilmember Bokey.
Here.
Councilmember Branstadter.
Here.
Councilmember Farmer.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Moss.
Here.
And Mayor Wayland.
Present. Thank you very much. Now, please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance to our nation's flag, followed by a brief moment of silence for those suffering hardships, whether at home or abroad, and there are many.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you very much. It is with great honor that we turn to our proclamations and presentations portion of tonight's agenda. And tonight, we are pleased to present a proclamation recognizing this month of March as Women's History Month. And for this, I account Councilmember Farmer to join Geneva Malmo, Papa Laulu, and Jowelli Holmes, seniors from Harrison Prep, Clover Park High School, and Lakes High School, respectively, in reverse order, to the podium for the presentation of the proclamation. So feel free to join Councilmember Farmer.
We have one strong woman representing. Women have been contributing to society since, well, I imagine, the beginning of time. The movement to honor those contributions to society began in 1981 with a single week in March dedicated to women's history. Then, in 1987, it was expanded to the whole month of March. 1987. That's 35 years ago. Fast forward to today, where we will, for the first time at the city of Lakewood, officially honor the contributions that women have been making to society since the beginning of time. My parents, especially my mother, taught me that I could be anything and achieve anything if I put my mind to it. I strive to live up to that expectation every single day. Joining me at the podium tonight is a young woman who is doing the same. I will read a little bit about her, and then we'll do the proclamation, and then we'll skip to the good bit, where she gets to say a few words, if she wants to. I would first like to thank the leadership of Lakes, Clover Park, and Harrison Prep High Schools, who nominated all of the women today to accept this proclamation. This is their night. This is Papa. And in her four years at Clover Park High School, Papa has displayed her heart for service by helping others and being involved in the school community. She is a scholar athlete competing in basketball, volleyball, fast pitch, and track. This year, she was recognized as the Lakewood Boys and Girls Club Youth of the Year. Youth of the Year. And she is graduating with honors, has earned multiple scholarships, and is debating between PLU and St. Martin's to pursue psychology and communications. Thank you, Papa, for being here. All right. Now let's read the proclamation. Whereas women of every race, class, and ethnic background have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of our nation in countless recorded and unrecorded ways, and continue to play critical economic, cultural, and social roles in every sphere of the life of the nation by constituting a significant portion of the labor force, working inside and outside of the home. And whereas women have played a unique role throughout the history of the nation by providing the majority of the volunteer labor force of the nation, and were particularly important in the establishment of early charitable, philanthropic, and cultural institutions in our nation. And whereas women of every race, class, and ethnic background served as early leaders in the forefront of every major progressive social change movement. And whereas women have served our country courageously in the military, and whereas women have been leaders, not only in securing their own rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, but also in the abolitionist movement, the emancipation movement, the industrial labor movement, the civil rights movement, and other movements, especially the peace movement, which creates a more fair and just society for all. And whereas despite these contributions, the role of women in history has been consistently overlooked and undervalued in literature, teaching, and study of history. Now, therefore, the Lakewood City Council hereby proclaims March as Women's History Month in the city of Lakewood, and calls upon all residents to acknowledge and honor the contributions and accomplishments of women. Proclaimed this 21st day of March, 2022, Jason Wayland, Mayor. This is for you. Would you like to say a few words?
First and foremost, I wanted to say thank you to the man above, who helped me and guided me to be the young leader I am today. Thank you to all those who came to support me, my sister. I also wanted to say thank you to those, the school staff, the students, and faculty, for giving me the opportunity to be here tonight. And lastly, a huge shout out to my dad for helping me seek my true identity and giving me the desire to help, encourage, and uplift those around me, especially women. And with today marking a special day for me to receive this award, I wanted to say thank you, guys, for allowing me to be here and receiving this award. And overall, just thank you.
We'll have you come up, and we'll take a photograph with all of us up here. And I just want to say what a great occasion and a great event. And as you indicated, I really appreciated the shout out you gave to your own father. All of us up here collectively have 10 daughters, as I counted around, and believe you and me, we very much hope and support that they all become leaders and have the opportunity to thrive, just as you are. So thank you for your contributions. My only criticism would be if you really want to go to a school that has basketball, Gonzaga should be on the list. Think we can almost field our own basketball team with our collective daughters, you know, almost. So, pretty close. Yeah, exactly. Well, that's fantastic. We really enjoy those opportunities to share accomplishments with our students here in the Clover Park School District. So now we turn to the public comment section of tonight's agenda. Public comments are accepted by mail, email, or certainly by live virtual comment. Please send comments in advance by mail or email to Ms. Schumacher, the city clerk, at the address here in Lakewood, or to her email address, bshumacher@cityoflakewood.us. Comments received up to an hour before the meeting have been provided to the council electronically. I do believe we've received two email comments from members of the public tonight. The clerk will now read the names of those who have submitted those comments in advance.
We received comments from Sean Arrent and Phil Hardy.
And I've read both. So thank you very much. So tonight, if you'd like to provide virtual public comments, you need to join the Zoom meeting with us as an attendee by calling the telephone dial number, I believe will be posted on the screen if it isn't already, and enter the meeting ID number 868-7263-2373. There it is on your screen. Please use the raise the hand feature to be called upon, and we will certainly do so. So I will first call on the Zoom attendees who have raised their virtual hand, and the city clerk is going to guide me in that, because she's got the power of the electronic pen. So it looks like the first on the screen is Mr. Dennis Haugen.
Hi, Dennis Haugen here from Sioux Falls, formerly of Lakewood. Well, in light of what's happening in the world, we sure all hope that Putin someday will face a war crimes trial. But think about it, shooting at apartments and living quarters and houses and civilians. When did that happen in the United States? Couple of years ago. We had riots. We had Molotov cocktails thrown. We had rocks and bricks thrown through windows. And none of our elected officials seemed to worry too much about who was inside. You know, they were seemed to be encouraging the rock throwers and whatnot. So I think at some point in time, governors like Inslee, governors like Wall in Minnesota, maybe they should face some kind of a trial. I mean, they let the CHAD area in Seattle stay that way for several weeks. And Hershey Anderson was killed, just an innocent person, going to a place he had a right to go. And the governors taking issue against police and holding off, but not only in Seattle, but in Minnesota and beyond. And people got killed, hurt, burned, whatever. Seems to be their shit. And they didn't call the National Guard. Now, I saw Heidi had a picture that I sent there. Our governor, Kristi Noem, was right on top of it. She was there. The minute the rocks started getting thrown, she put a stop to it. Maybe took two, three hours. But she put a stop to it. Done. Over with. And then she proceeded to continue to deal with other COVID issues. And, you know, we just got a bill through against CRT, because there's something going on in the schools that ain't right. Like, one of our Ivy League schools has a bunch of lawsuits. Law students protest against free speech. I think this suggests a deeper problem, and that deeper problem is in the education system. And I think the public across the nation is getting ready to fight at the ballot box. And hopefully, we'll see some changes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Haugen. Next, we have Christina Minetti. Oops. Did I miss Mr. Carter? Mr. Carter can be next. I'm sorry.
Hello, can you hear me? I'm not Mr. Carter. If you'd like him to go, you have to turn me off.
Oh, go ahead. We're having a little bit of shuffling of the names. Sorry about that, Ms.
Okay, no problem. So my name is Christina Minetti. I live in Lakewood. I was taken aback by the mayor's reaction to my reasonable suggestion during last public comments that there should be a tree-cutting moratorium after all, since more oaks have been cut down. Through his unpleasant tone when asking the city council about the moratorium, see 1 hour 25 minutes 05 of the video, he was actually bullying both me and his fellow council members. And when Mr. Bokey, in his introduction of a new ad hoc tree committee member noted that she is a homeowner, Mr. Wayland apparently felt compelled, for some odd reason, to stress this fact rather awkwardly by noting that Ms. Franklin is a private property owner in the Tillicum neighborhood. This implies, of course, that another applicant from a qualified census tract was at a disadvantage because her address gave her away as just a renter, despite the fact that she has a lifelong interest in science and environmental questions. Maybe it's because the mayor and city council figure that private property owners will be more likely to oppose tree preservation. The city sure made a point of making a special announcement to them in the last city magazine, as if shouting, "Attention, all private property owners. Cut them down now while you still can." Let's face it, though. No one really owns property at all, not even the mayor. Although just under 65% of Americans own their own home, according to Forbes, 80% of 25- to 39-year-old homeowners still have a mortgage, as do even 32% of people over 70, who have had generations to pay off their mortgages, yet are still in debt because of them. Moreover, if someone does pay their house off, he or she will have to pay taxes on it, of course, for the rest of his or her life, or face foreclosure. Finally, of course, we all die, which is also why, for example, people should not be allowed to destroy slow-growing special native trees on their property. You are a steward of the land you happen to be living on at the moment. Including people from Lakewood's poorest neighborhoods, now called qualified census tracts, is allegedly supposed to make the committee more representative. At first, I also thought, hey, that's good. They're trying to give the poor people who live there a voice, since we're talking about questions of environmental justice. But it seems it's not actually that straightforward. In addition to showing preference to private property owners, an established connection to the city also seems to help. I request that the city makes a concerted effort to eradicate this divisive prejudice, which is rooted in the belief that the mere fact of owning something on paper justifies entitlement. Perhaps at your next retreat, you could bring in a counselor to help you overcome this kind of harmful prejudice. Thank you.
Next, Bunchy Carter.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, cool, cool, cool. Well, first, I want to say good evening, everybody. I think people sometimes assume I don't have manners, but that's not the case. My mother raised me very well. I'm very glad to have the opportunity to talk to you out right now, because for the last, oh, I don't know, what's today? Today is the 21st. For about the last 12 days, I've been in extreme uproar. Haven't slept very well. Done something that I don't do a whole lot of, and that's crying. You know why, though? Because it appears that people who deem it okay for the police to kill people, thought it was okay again. Mary Rob Ness's tracking record is horrible. That has nothing to do with y'all. And Mayor Wayland, I say that to let you know that I listened to you when you said, "It's out of your hands." I got it. It's out of y'all hands. And that's precisely why I asked my team to no longer include you all in our letter-writing campaign, because you were right. It is absolutely beyond your control at this point. And honestly, it's beyond Mary Rob Ness's control at this point, because she already made a poor decision, and she is now going to have to live with it. But there are bigger dogs in the yard. So now the only option we have left is to take these bones to a much bigger dog. And hopefully, that dog is really hungry for justice for the people, and not just to make sure that that thin blue line is protected. I understand representing for your people. I do it every single day, whether it be Panthers or Black people in general. I represent for my people every single day, so I get that. But in an instance when someone is clearly wrong, when someone has clearly made a mistake or misjudgment, protecting that person only shows the flaws in your own character. That's what it shows me. So it leads me to believe that I'm surrounded by people, and surrounded by people who have some pseudo-formal authority over my life, who don't value my life, who don't value the life of people like me. So you can understand why I've been a little distraught for the last 12 days. And you can understand why, until there's no breath left in my body, it'll always be justice for Sayyid Joaquin. Until there's no more breath in my body, it will always be, "Stop cutting down the Gary Oaks." If we don't protect the environment that we've been given, if we don't protect the earth that we have right now, our children, our grandchildren, our great-grandchildren won't have that same privilege. Isn't that what we all here for? All power to the people.
Thank you. Next, we have Tishamir Dunlop.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
I'd like to make the public comment for Sean Arrent, who--
Have to speak up just a little bit, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'd like to make the public comment for Sean Arrent, who wasn't able to be here today. Dear Mayor and City Council, Clover Creek needs to breathe. Water levels need to ebb and flow, and that requires ecologically significant space to do so. A study recently came out that showed that a 100-year flood of the creek would easily overtake I-5. The dam at Chambers Creek is coming down, and salmon will be returning. The communities around the southern edge of Lakewood suffer from higher levels of air pollution than the rest of the city. Any one of these reasons alone would be more than enough reason to acquire the abandoned creekside properties along Pacific Highway South and restore them. More than enough reason to stop the warehouse at, well, no, more than enough reason to stop the warehouse at 123rd on Spring Brook. I can't emphasize this enough. Salmon and waterways are not private properties. When private developers infringe on them, they are stealing from our indigenous neighbors, the general public, and the future. Thank you.
Thank you. And again, for the record, Mr. Arrent's comments were provided to the council in written form, but thank you. Are there any other members who are attending electronically via Zoom that wish to speak to the counselor in the public comment period? If there are no other members attending via Zoom who wish to address the counselor in public comment, I'll now turn to the written sign-up sheet. And for this, we had Kevin Ikeda. So he put a no down for that. Mr. Dunlop would be next. And it looks like the other two on the list were the two students who have since departed, but they were here to be present for the proclamation. Mr. Dunlop.
My name is James Dunlop. I'm outnumbered, and I'm a Lakewood resident. I want to comment on the city of Lakewood's return to colonial values. I was watching the March 7th council meeting on YouTube. Who needs reality TV when you've got the real council members of Lakewood? And there was an exchange between two council members regarding the appointment of new members of the ad hoc tree committee. A new member of the committee was introduced to the council, and it was remarked that she was a homeowner. And the mayor affirmed his approval that she was indeed a private property owner. This successful applicant was from a qualified census tract. There had been another applicant, also from a qualified census tract, a long-term resident of Lakewood, who had failed to get on the tree committee. She lived in rented accommodation. From council members' comments, it seems the city regards property ownership as an important qualification for committee membership. In other words, if you own a property, you have more rights to have your opinion heard than if you don't, like in colonial days, when you often needed to own a property in order to vote. For example, if you were a colonist in North Carolina, you had to own 50 acres of land to vote. After the Revolution, the situation improved or deteriorated, depending on your view. In Rhode Island in 1841, there was actually a rebellion over property-based voting rights, and it wasn't until 1856 that North Carolina removed its property qualification. It seems to me that the tree committee is yet another example of the city trying to push its agenda and getting the opinion it wants to hear. And they seem to have a colonial mindset, believing that a property owner is superior to a renter, perhaps because they are perceived to be more likely to support the status quo. Having said that, I am open-minded about the tree committee, and I believe it can rise above the somewhat questionable process by which its members were chosen. Still, it does seem that the colonial center, the city's pride and joy, is appropriately named. Shame about the artwork. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Are there any other members of the audience who wish to address the counselor in this public comment period? Any others who wish to address the counselor in this public comment period? If not, I'll declare the public comment period closed. We'll now move to the consent agenda. Madam Clerk.
A, approval of the minutes of the city council study session of February 28, 2022. B, approval of the minutes of the city council meeting of March 7, 2022. C, items filed in the office of the city clerk. One, Parks and Recreation Advisory Board meeting minutes of September 28, 2021. Two, Parks and Recreation Advisory Board meeting minutes of October 26, 2021. Three, Parks and Recreation Advisory Board meeting minutes of November 23, 2021. Four, Public Safety Advisory Committee meeting minutes of December 8, 2021. Five, Arts Commission meeting minutes of January 10, 2022. Six, Arts Commission Public Art Subcommittee meeting minutes of January 25, 2022. Seven, Parks and Recreation Advisory Board meeting minutes of February 1, 2022. Eight, Planning Commission meeting minutes of February 2, 2022. And nine, Arts Commission meeting minutes of February 7, 2022.
Thank you. Are there any items which any member of the council wishes to remove from the consent agenda at this time? If not, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Second.
It's been moved by Deputy Mayor Moss, seconded by Councilmember Bell, that we adopt the consent agenda as presented. Is there any further discussion? Mr. Branstadter, no. If not, all those in favor of adoption of the consent agenda as presented signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The consent agenda has been adopted. We now move to the regular agenda. Unfinished business is first on the list. Is there any unfinished business, Mr. Coffield?
There is none, Mayor.
New business. We do have an item of new business. Madam Clerk, motion 2022-23, please.
Authorizing the award of a construction contract with RL Aaliyah Company in the amount of $10,626,067.80 for JBLM North Access Improvement Project Phase 2.
Thank you. I'll call on our Public Works Director, Paul Bucic, to give us a brief review of motion 2022-23.
Good evening, Mayor Wayland, Member of City Council. On March 1, we opened up bids for the JBLM North Access Improvement Project Phase 2. After reviewing those projects and then looking at the funding for the Phase 1, Phase 2 projects that were lumped into one project based on our initial pursuit of the DCP federal funding, we determined-- we determined that even though we got extremely good bids on both projects, those good bids resulted in a shortfall of two of our funding sources being able to utilize them fully. We have a shortfall of $609,000 of swim funding we anticipated being able to use and approximately $600,000 of our Transportation Improvement Board funding for a total of $1.2 million. In addition to that, we looked at what else were driving up some of our costs, and they are listed in your memo to $207,45,000 for a shortfall of $1.952 million. Through the course of this, we took a look at available funding that could be brought to bear. We had a conversation with the council last Monday night at a study session where we laid out the different options, including rebid the project. We do not think that rebidding the project will result in cost efficiencies. In fact, it will probably result in higher costs, considering their turmoil going through the community and the nation and the world right now. We've identified that there is excess refunding from 2021 in the tune of $1.5 million. Excess refunding from 2022 to $200,000, and general fund transfer one time of $252,860. With those actions, which we expect to bring before council to finalize later this spring through the normal budget updating process, we will have anticipated full funding for this project and finalizing the body of work from Nianza all the way to Norfolk. With that, I'm able to answer your questions you may have.
Thank you. Any questions? It looks like we've got Mr. Bransdeter, then Mr. Anderson, and Mr. Bokey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and Mr. Bucic. And I know that this project is extensive in that it has a lot of different street segments in it, Washington Boulevard, but Vernon and Edgewater and Norfolk. To be able to go and do that. And while we haven't done an update of our non-motorized transportation plan, this project is envisioned and expected by the community to not only move vehicle traffic, but to enhance pedestrian and non-motorized vehicle traffic going forward. But as I looked at the the bid sheets, and I know that a couple of meetings ago, you, when you informed us about the budget, you also, you also discussed Vernon, the segment of this project that is on Vernon, that it would have standard width sidewalks. But I didn't glean from that presentation whether Vernon would have then bicycle lanes or shared use designation of the, of the traffic lanes for bicycles. And it raised the question when I looked at the number of there were a number of bicycle lane markers included in the bids that was less than 40, which seemed few compared to the, the length of the project. And so I was wondering if you could summarize exactly how the different sections of the project are going to accommodate non-motorized and pedestrian traffic.
Thank you for the question, Councilmember Bransdeter. I'd be happy to do that for you. Because JBLM North Access Improvement Phase 2 Washington Boulevard ties into the work we did on Phase 1, of course, around Gravely Drive. We've also been talking with the State Department of Transportation. They had a plan for having a bike commuter lane along I-5 going from DuPont through JBLM and further up through Silicon into Lakewood. That was not an acceptable alternative path for JBLM. So we have been working with them and Pierce County and others that the new path that they are supporting, it goes through the backside of Norfolk, and it comes in Norfolk Road there, where North Gate is. We, at that point where it comes into the city, we will have bike lanes as part of the major project. Six-foot bike lanes on both sides, coming down North Gate, up Edgewood, onto Washington Boulevard. Bike lanes will continue all the way down till they hit Gravely Drive, at which point they transition to the shared use path around the inside of the lake, so that we tie in what was, with what was done on a previous project. On the Vernon segment, we looked at that and we said, for the most part, that's recreational use. It's not going to be a lot of, a lot of commuters, because that's not the route that they're going to take. And there's, it's a very short distance with a very low ADT, or average daily traffic load. In that case, we looked at and made a determination that the appropriate cross-section for that road was two six-foot sidewalks and standard width lanes for the road segment.
So would Vernon be signed as other places in the city are? That the lanes are shared use?
In order to have it shared use, we need to design the roadway widths that each one of the lanes for a minimum of 14 feet wide. I'd have to go back and check. I don't think we did that. I think they're 12-foot. So the intention there is bicyclists, which are pretty much going to be people going through the park, will stay on the sidewalk. But again, if they stay in the road section and ride through there, which they have every legal right to do so, the overall traffic on Vernon is at a low enough threshold that it should be safe for them to do so. Not children, they'll stay on the sidewalk. But adults who don't want to be on the sidewalk will just use the, the lane.
Okay, so then let me just move to one other clarifying question that the $600,000 of swim money that was budgeted but can't be used because the swim elements of the project cost less. Is that the, the right, right interpretation?
Councilmember Bransdeter, your assessment is correct. We do not control how the contractors spread their costs across the project. Uh, we got extremely good prices, extremely good prices for concrete curb and gutter. Concrete curb and gutter goes to the swim. Therefore, we got a great savings there. They make up for it in other project elements. So therefore, we could not pick up all the money, be expected.
And so, and then is, is, would, would, in my understanding, be correct that that $600,000 that we don't need from the swimming utility is also $600,000 of bonds we don't need to sell, since this project was one of the, the projects that were envisioned being included by having the swim dollars bonded?
Councilmember Bransdeter, I'm going to turn that question over to the city manager, because we're talking about bonds and the funding. He and the CFO for the city are responsible for that.
Uh, Councilmember Bransdeter, actually, I learned late this afternoon that the bonds had already been issued. So that $600,000 will simply go back into the stormwater, stormwater fund. And, um, and given the way that the bond ordinance is written, it can be used for future capital projects that have a stormwater element to it.
So, so we're, we're going to pay whatever the interest on the bonds is on that $600,000, but we'll have to add an additional project that was, that was not initially envisioned when we passed the bond ordinance.
That's correct, Councilmember Bransdeter.
All right, thank you.
Well, my question's probably simpler. I, I see a lot of familiar names on the bid sheet, but the successful bidder isn't one of them. At least not familiar to me. Where are they from? And do we have any history with them?
Councilmember Anderson, RL Aaliyah is actually building Phase 1 of the project. They have built our 111th, 112th Street project completed. They, they built our Lakewood Drive project successfully. I don't know the, I don't recall their exact location, where they're from, but they've been doing extremely good work for us, being very happy that they got the second phase of work, which probably is one of the reasons why we got such good bids, because they have all the equipment and personnel already in play. Thank you.
Mr. Bokey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. But back to the, I was trying to, I didn't get the calculator out when I looked at these lists. So when we talk about surface water and, and the schedule, it's really on the items on, I guess it's beginning on page 37 of our, of what we've got. And it starts with kind of, well, there's stormwater right there, right? So A-33, A-32, somewhere in there on the list. Because I was trying to see, and there were some things that were more expensive, but you're saying the big savings were, it doesn't look like stormwater sewer pipe. That was right along the engineer's estimate. But you're saying it's farther down than things like cement concrete traffic gutter where we had 679 and they had 532. Is that, and it's, and that just adds up, I guess, along the way.
It is Phase 1 and Phase 2, so do a complete assessment. We would have to have both bid packets, packages in front of us, see how the $609,000 was derived to at. So essentially, really good bids on both of them, frankly. Um, but the way the contractors spread their bids, what we expect on the engineer's estimate for what we'd be able to charge to our surface water utility is not what we can charge to the surface water utility. We did go through and make sure that, as appropriate, utility was paying for their, its fair share. I shouldn't say they, its fair share of the design costs, any right-of-way costs, permitting costs, construction management costs, et cetera. So we scrubbed it as carefully as we could.
And I, and I should point out that on our bid sheets, and, and it's also in, in the packet for the public to view, that Lakewood Water is paying a large portion of this because they're doing their water work. I think it's like 2.8 million or something like that.
Councilmember Bokey, uh, that would be correct for the two projects.
Okay. And then, um, what's the timing on this?
The latest that I've heard from the project manager who's been talking to the contractor is they expect to start the Phase 2 work in the June-July timeframe, about the timeframe they're finishing the Phase 1 work. Now, they intend, in fact, we directed them to start on the other end of the project, on North Gate Road. But in order to do that, we have to improve some of the side streets there because they cannot handle that, that traffic load. And there's just no good alternative route.
Okay, and then it'll go for at least a year, correct?
We're anticipating 20 to 24 months.
20 to 24.
Almost two years of additional construction activity.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Bell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Bucic. I just had a question about the uplighting on the roundabout for the artwork. Is that a part of, of the Phase 1? There, or is that a different part, a different phase?
Uh, Councilmember Bell, it is Phase 1. You haven't seen it yet because they're in the process of doing that roundabout right now.
Awesome. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Bucic? Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. I'll entertain a motion to approve and adopt motion 2022-23. So move. Then move by Councilmember Anderson, seconded by Councilmember Bransdeter, that we adopt motion 2022-23. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, say by saying, by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? 2022-23 has been adopted. We now move to reports by the city manager. Mr. Caulfield.
Evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and councilmembers. We have three presentations that we would like to provide to you this, this evening. The first one is, I'd like to introduce our Assistant to the City Manager and Policy Analyst, Michael Vargas. Mr. Vargas will be providing a brief overview of the work that's underway by Pierce County as it relates to their solid and hazardous waste management plan. And then he in turn is going to introduce a speaker who is going to provide you a more detailed update. So with that, Mr. Vargas.
Thank you, Mr. Caulfield. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and councilmembers. Michael Vargas, Assistant to the City Manager, Policy Analyst here. And I have invited Mr. Ryan Dix, Pierce County's Sustainable Resources Administrator here tonight to give an overview of the 2021 through 2040 Tacoma-Pierce County Solid and Hazardous Waste Management Plan. So for about a month now, city staff have been reviewing the plan in preparation to submit any input by the March 25th deadline. As a reminder, the city is able to submit input and comments about the 20-year plan before it is adopted via the inter-local agreement the city entered into with Pierce County last year concerning adoption of the plan. And after the presentation, Mr. Dix and I will be available to answer any questions from the council. So with that, I invite Mr. Ryan Dix.
Mr. Dix, if you're on, under another name, could you please raise your hand? Mayor, it doesn't appear that Mr. Dix has joined the meeting yet.
Mr. Vargas, are you able to kind of weave your way through the salient points?
Um, yeah, yeah, I'll be able to do that. Let me pull up the packet here. One moment. We believe in you. We believe in you. Yes, one moment here. So yep, I have the packet pulled up here.
Great.
So yep, I am, I'll just briefly go through this. And I, I attended one of the hearing committees on this by Pierce County, so I'm, I'm pretty familiar here. So I'll just start off with the plan vision here, that'd be page 43 of your packet there. So this is the overarching vision of the plan, and a lot of the goals and objectives you'll see throughout are tied back to this. So a solid waste system that is equitable, protects human environmental health, and is resilient to the known and unforeseen changes that are come, that are coming our way. So for some background here, local governments are required to develop comprehensive, solid waste management plans through the various RCW codes you see there. A hazardous waste, materials and wastes, or moderate-risk waste plans is also required by this RCW. And the background slide here, so the, the original plan was made back in 2000, and Lakewood was a part of that original plan as well. And baked, built into the plan are these updates known as supplements. So every so often, about four to five years, Pierce County will actually reevaluate, based on performance metrics, how well is the county doing in meeting the various goals and objectives they have laid out in the plan? And so the last supplement we see here was in 2016. And this leads us to today with the 2021 through 2022 update. So really, the plan is built out as the local hazardous waste management plan and also the contamination reduction and outreach plan. And the next slide here, and in your packet, we see the plan development. So these are the various stakeholders that were included in the development of the plan. So we see Pierce County, Planning and Public Works, City of Tacoma, Tacoma-Pierce County Health Department, and these various entities here. Of note, we do have waste connections there, which is actually contracted with the city to provide our waste management services. This is especially useful to know because, well, they know best on the ground, what are the conditions of Pierce County, the conditions of the waste management plan in Lakewood, so they're able to inform the Pierce County plan. And here we see the plan development timeline there. And so I'll get into the plan organization here. So there were 10 chapters to this plan. It's, it's quite a comprehensive plan. It's over 200 pages here. We're not going to go through everything here, but some of the key areas here we see are the planning area, public outreach, waste reduction, recycling, organics management, moderate-risk waste, miscellaneous waste streams, solid waste collection, and transfer and disposal. So the next page there is the plan overview relationship to other plans. So this is how this plan interfaces with other, both state plans and Pierce County plans, and also the City of Tacoma plans. And so we'll get into the, the main content of the plan here. So this materials management hierarchy there, you see that upside-down triangle. This is really the This is really the driving sort of force behind how a waste management plan in Pierce County would be conducted moving forward. Just to give some history, the previous plan was really focused on recycling. That, that was sort of, you can see that's sort of the second to top layer there, reuse. But lately, the philosophy has shifted to just have an overall reduction of waste completely, both, both recycling and non-recycling. And that's driven by a variety of forces, including market forces, in which recycling has, you know, increasing costs over the years. So the main impetus behind the plan is just to reduce waste, period. And, but going down the hierarchy here, we see, you know, it's also useful, and you know, to reuse, recycling compost, recover energy from waste, and the very bottom, the least desirable is to put in the landfill. So here are the plan overview goals and objectives on the next page there. We see that we have five categories here. So we have sustainability goal, resources goal, communication and education partnerships goal, and system and infrastructure. And so the way this plan is really built out is that you'll have these various, sort of how our comprehensive plan is built. So under each of these goals, we'll have different objectives. So just to give a brief overview, I'll just go over the first one real quick. Sustainability goal, implement economically feasible and sustainable waste management practices. And so there's going to be these three objectives underneath. The first one there, reduce waste and improve recycling effectiveness. So that ties back to the hierarchy that we recently saw. We're just trying to reduce waste completely with this plan. Second one here, protect the environment and human health by reducing G greenhouse gas emissions and delivering solid waste services. And the third objective there, make the solid and hazardous waste system more accessible and equitable for all Pierce County customers. So what the plan does is that it really dives into each of these various objectives here. It provides some background information and also some metrics in order to measure how well we're, the, the plan would achieve these, these objectives. So going down here, so the next slide here is the actions implementation. So and for here, we have, so the, we've laid out the overall goals, we've laid out the objectives, but now these, these are the action items for each of the objectives essentially. So they're built out, we have timing here, so they can be short, medium, or long-term. Short-term would be within a year, midterm about three years, and long-term, five-plus years. And so on the next, these next several pages of your, in the packet here, the actions implementation slides, these really lay out each of the action items. They lay out which objective they tie back to, which chapter they're part of, also the timing of them, so are they short, medium, or long-term, and also the agency leads and partners there. So there's quite a lot of them, and I'll, I'll just go over just one of them, just to give a, a feel for these. So the first one here would fall under administration, it would fall under objective R1, which if you go back to the goals and objectives, that actually relates back to the resources goal. So this action item would be assess funding, including current funding, sources, grants, rates, and fees for different areas of the system of an annual, on an annual basis, to recommend potential improvements. So there are, let's see here, what, thirty-two of these action items. They all relate back to the objectives, which then themselves lead back to the goals. So that's the overall structure of the comprehensive plan here. And we'll skip down to page fifty-seven of your packet. So this would be the appendices. So as I mentioned before, this plan is really laid out into two plans. This next section is called crop, the Contamination Reduction and Outreach Plan. So for state legislation here, so this is required by this RCW. And the purpose of the crop is to identify and plan for appropriate community outreach, education, and engagement strategies to reduce contamination, help optimize Pierce County's recycling system. So this really ties back to the, the hierarchy, and just the overall impetus of this plan is to reduce waste completely, especially as it pertains to recycling, which has become, due to market forces, more expensive over the years. So we have a nice little graphic there. But yeah, let's see here. And for the appendices, crop, crop requirements. So this lists out all this, all the sort of, what the content of the crop there. So you can review that. Then there's nothing, it's, it's really just list of actions to reduce contamination of sing, for single-family and multi-family residences, commercial locations and drop boxes. It also includes an analysis of the costs and other impacts of the recycling system. So it's really an overview of the recycling system, which is in turn a part of the solid waste and, and management plan. And so the final here, final slide there, is really next steps. And I know Mr. Caulfield has provided an updated version of this, since this plan has gone to the Economic and Infrastructure Pierce County Committee, and the, the Pierce County Committee members, they had some, some input on the plan. Most notably, and I'm, I'll get, we can give an update about this to the council, but most notably, that body identified that they wanted to see more action items related to illegal dumping, and, you know, how to combat that, or, you know, alleviate that. And also how to address any homelessness encampments and how to service those communities as well, which I know is, is something that the city also, also encounters. And with that, that, that's pretty much it. Yeah, so I invite any, any questions here from the council.
Well, thank you, Mr. Vargas, Mr. Anderson, and then Mr. Branstadter.
Well, more of a comment than a, than a question. You can think of the state legislation as the garbage equivalent of the Growth Management Act. It's something you have to have a plan for. It has to be done on a county-wide basis. Each county has its solid waste management plan that has to go in. And it incorporates input, but it really doesn't incorporate control on the part of municipalities, at least ones without a, a dump. And what you see here is, in many ways, reflective of the fact that we have a garbage monopoly, and that garbage monopoly owns and operates the only landfill that we have access to outside the city of Tacoma. And they have a financial incentive to, they have a contractual obligation to carry it out for years, but they have a financial incentive to fill it up faster. So that's kind of an underpinning of why you see a lot of these elements looking to reduce the volume of waste, is because at some point that has to get put on a railroad car and sent to Arlington, Oregon. And it behooves all of us to delay that as much as possible. While we can have input.
Right.
We don't have control.
Mr. Branstadter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, Mr. Vargas, the in the three pages of actions implementation, there in, there doesn't seem to be much in it for municipalities to do. As Councilmember Anderson indicated, it's, we're not in, in the business of control that, but we are, as a city, in the midst of finalizing our short-term pl- plan regarding climate change, which includes things that relate to greenhouse gas emissions, which is a theme that appears in a number of these. You, you, what is, what sort of relationship do you see between the small things that we can do within our climate change action plan that will keep us aligned with this? Or is there anything here that, in our anticipated plans, might be contrary?
Yes, thank you for the question, Councilmember Branstadter. You know, I would say how this plan interfaces with our own climate change action plan, I believe that would take some more time to bear out, although I would note that there hasn't been any sort of friction between what the county goals are here and what our own city goals are as it relates to climate change. And as noted by Councilmember Anderson, in effect, you know, we are the ones who are taking action with our own, within our own municipality when it comes to waste management. I would say that this plan are really actions that the county will do, as opposed to, you know, what they would like to see done at the municipality levels. So I believe there is, I, I, I can get back to you on that, to see if there are any frictions, but I have not heard of any, and that would be part of our input to the plan if there were to be any. Thank you.
Yeah, and, and then I, I would just note that it would seem that while much of this is looking at trying to be impactful, so they're really trying to get businesses and the construction world and that to do better at recycling or of, of making use of recycled materials that you know, you know, I, I, I sort of deal with recycling, one gray container at, at, at a time, but that, looking out to twenty forty, the plan doesn't seem to have a significant communications plan to reach out to residential users. And I don't know if that's because the residential recycling and residential use is minimal in the big picture that they're looking at. But I was hoping to see something more robust in that in terms of, 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 of an education and, and being able to go forward and, and, and do that. And, and then let me, this is my, my last question, because it was the only place that I saw where municipalities had a role, and the only action one. And there is a thing that says, work with Pierce County and municipal, this is on, oh, I don't know, it's on page fifty-six, but it's, work with Pierce County and municipal partners. There, there's Lakewood, integrate all our review through design review processes. What is that thing? What does, what does that mean?
Yeah, I can follow up with that, with the Pierce County staff to get back to you. That's a good question, Councilmember. I'll get back to you.
Okay, I, I'm just, it's just a connection of words that I'm not familiar with, and so I'm, I'm trying, and, and probably I'm more curious than, than thinking that it's something to be concerned about, but that's where it's, okay. Mayor, that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Vargas.
Well, thank you, Mr. Vargas. Any other questions before we turn to the next item on Mr. Caulfield's list? Thank you for bringing your tap dancing shoes, Mr. Vargas. Appreciate it.
Of course, of course. Thank you for, for bearing with me, everyone. Yep, all right. Thank you very much, counsel. Thank you.
But next up, I'd like to call upon our Housing Program Manager, Jeff Gum, who will give you a follow-up report on the fiscal year twenty twenty-two Home and CDBG Annual Action Plan. This is a follow-up from a discussion and presentation that he had with you back on February twenty-eighth. So with that, Mr. Gum?
Mr. Gum, we, we can't hear you. No.
Been his best pitch yet.
Looks like you're muted.
If we can get Mr. Vargas to pitch on this one. Like your little speaker down there. Got it, Mr. Gum?
The work this time? And I'm not certain what that was all about, but logging off and logging back on work. So I'll try and be brief. This is something that you all have seen very recently. February twenty-eighth, we brought forward a home and CDBG proposal that, that discussed the home and CDBG programs, kind of where we have been through the years, and talked about fiscal year twenty twenty-two's annual action plan. And that's where I wanted to kind of bring up the discussion tonight. So the, after reviewing it with council, we did take the plan as, as proposed to council to the, what was it, to the March second Citizens Advisory Board meeting. The Citizens Advisory Board concurred with the recommendations. They felt they were on track to meeting the goals and the priorities set forward in the five-year plan, and they did not recommend any changes to those funding recommendations. So I would point out in your agenda bill pages, where are we at? Sixty-two and sixty-three. So sixty-two would be the home funding recommendations for fiscal year twenty twenty-two. There are no funding recommendation changes at this point in time. Recommended, recommended funding would be Affordable Housing Fund for home would be funded two hundred and twenty-eight thousand, three hundred and thirty-two dollars and fifty-eight cents. Home would fund down payment assistance in the amount of a hundred and eighty-seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty-one dollars and thirty-two cents. Page sixty-three of your agenda packet lists CDBG funding recommendations. Again, there were no changes from the CSAB for any of these funding recommendations. So they are housing, major home repair, recommended funding at two hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars, five hun- two hundred and fifty-six thousand, five hundred and twelve dollars and eighty-seven cents. Down payment assistance, recommended funding at seventy-five thousand dollars. Pierce County Housing Authorities Village Square and Oakleaf Apartments Rehab is recommended at two hundred thousand dollars. CDBG Services, the emergency payments program, would be recommended for a hundred thousand dollars. CDBG Administration of Home Housing Services is recommended at fifteen thousand dollars. Administration is recommended at the twenty percent cap, which is a hundred and seventeen thousand, five hundred and twenty-three dollars and eighty cents. An NSP one abatement program is recommended funding at fifty thousand dollars. Moving forward, the annual action plan would come to a public hearing April first through, or sorry, a public comment period, April first to April thirtieth. That's both the City of Lakewood's plan and Tacoma's plan. It would come before council for a public hearing on April eighteenth, and then submit it to HUD on May thirteenth. The only update that I really have is, since we presented this, Congress did pass an omnibus package for a funding bill. I do know that CDBG's funding was decreased by four point five percent, which, as I always try and play conservative numbers, the budgets that they were looking at were increases of five to ten percent, and we get a five percent cut. So if that comes to fruition, and depending on how many different grantees there are, I do anticipate about forty thousand dollars in reduction in the numbers that we're looking at. So I would propose to just prorate the allocations accordingly. The one that I would not recommend to prorate would be the Pierce County Housing Authority, because that's a because that's a hard number for a construction budget, whereas the other ones can be prorated and used for different projects. The other update I wanted to address really quickly was the question. Councilmember Branstadter pointed out that the service numbers for the Phillips Road sidewalk project looked inflated. And I did want to point out that those numbers that we were discussing in the last meeting were 25,775 clients being served. That is the five-year consolidated plan number for infrastructure. So the City of Lakewood over five years will look to serve 25,775 individuals. The Phillips Road sidewalk project itself is serving 5,345 individuals. So it's one small project on the way to meeting that goal, hopefully. So with that, I turn it back to council, and if you have any questions of me, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Gumm. Any questions, Mr. Gumm? Mr. Anderson?
What's the specific purpose for the Pierce County Housing Authority allocation for rehab? What's, what's being done, do you know?
They are applying for exterior painting, siding repair, window trim repair. What else do we have on there? There's some, it's pretty much all exterior work. Painting, siding, trim, roof, fascia types of things. It's fairly simple exterior work.
So quarter of our allocation is going to cover their mismanagement, essentially. They've lost millions to embezzlement. They haven't provided for maintenance reserves. And we're helping to bail them out or others helping to bail them out?
On this project, that would be Lakewood's funding the entire project. They would pay for any overruns and costs.
Any other questions, Mr. Gumm, Mr. Anderson?
No, I just said I'm uncomfortable with that. They're in a state of turmoil. They're currently selling their single-family residence under a plan that's five years late because HUD wanted them to move to multifamily, which are much more effective and efficient, and they didn't do anything for about five years once they got general authorization for that. They lost millions in embezzlement. Orders in disarray. There's some discussion of possibly combining them with Tacoma, which is, I can tell you that the last director of HUD for the Northwest personally told me that it was ironic that the best housing authority and the worst housing authority in the region were next to each other. And so I have no doubt it needs to be done. Because they were also went into a bankruptcy a few years ago as a result of deferred maintenance. Obligations that came with the lawsuits on that. So I wish them well. I'm questioning about the timing of, of this. But their budget is kind of like any other human services grant recipient. My concern.
Anyone else? Questions, comments? Any thoughts, Mr. Gumm, on that?
Um, we have met with the current staff. So the executive director, he did meet with you as a council when he had the meeting. He has an extensive background in banking, has worked for jurisdictions that have received CDBG funding. I believe he managed one. So the, his knowledge of CDBG and finances is something that's going to be a bonus to the organization. Some of their staff members are new to the program. Their development staff comes from, I believe, Snohomish County, one of the housing authorities there, and has worked for the City of Seattle doing project development. So the team that's going to do the project is in place and are capable of doing the project. I don't see that to be an issue. As Councilmember Anderson mentioned, I mean, it's their history of having issues with finances is it's clear. I don't necessarily need to go into great detail about that, but they appear to be on the right path at this point in time. I would say typically they've, they've thrown in more funding into projects than this that they're proposing. They're really only covering cost overrun. So that's, that's something slightly different than I have seen in years past.
Mr. Branstadter?
Yeah, Mr. Gumm. So I seem to have in the back of my mind from previous reports that the Pierce County Housing Authority owns five multifamily projects of various sizes in the city is that is that. And we funded work on some of those projects in previous year annual plans, going back even into the previous five-year plan. But is this a new precedent of where we're funding maintenance essentially fully rather than shared funding? And are we setting a precedent that's for the future?
Good question. I'm not certain that we would be setting a precedent. I mean, with a one-time funding, I think it could be made clear that this is a one-time allocation where the city is funding the entire project. It would be a project that would be, at least one that I'm looking forward to seeing how they operate, seeing how they conduct themselves and see how the organization manages itself. It's, it's a fairly, it's a sizable investment for CDBG, but a fairly small investment for a construction project, a $200,000 construction project. It's not necessarily very large. One thing that did push us up is it's being done now. So construction costs obviously are higher than we would have seen in years past. But I think being very careful to note that, that this is a one-time deal where the city would be funding 100%, and that's not something to be, to be looking for in the future. We historically have looked at a match of other projects and evaluated who was putting in funds and what the matches were and what those percentages were and evaluating them based on that. So it's something that we have looked at, and I would say we would continue to do in the future.
I know that the rental housing safety program does not inspect Pierce County Housing Authority properties. But based on the scope of work of this project, would that be an indication that this property probably wouldn't have passed?
Correct. The siding and painting issues alone would have caused it to fail and had those need to be repaired.
Okay, and if since we're, since we're giving them the money and they're going to do the contract, we're not going to be inspecting the completed work?
My staff would inspect the completed work, yes. Martha Larkin would be in charge of ensuring Davis Bacon provisions and following through with the bidding process and inspecting the work when it was completed.
So, so we would do that against standards that are similar to rental housing safety program standards?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Bokey?
Mr. Gumm, quick question. The, I'm, I am not familiar with the Oakleaf Apartments. Could you describe who they, who the tenants are? Is there, is there, is there a certain group? Is it low income or is it seniors or is it, who's in there? Or what is, what is the main audience, I guess, or the, or main customer for the Oakleaf Apartments for?
I will tell you, I just got a spreadsheet from that. I have to put on my glasses. I've been here long enough where I need to wear glasses now. Okay. So the Oakleaf, it's 26 units. 21 of the units are currently occupied. They've got some vacant units. They're primarily one and two-bedroom units. So they have 13, no, 15 one-bedroom units and five two-bedroom units that are currently occupied. They've got one three-bedroom unit. So they're all smaller size apartment complexes. A majority of the, of the individuals that live there are extremely low incomes. Right now, there's 15 of the tenants in the households are at 30% or below AMI. Four are at 50% or below AMI, and one is at 80%. And that one household is the project, the manager of the units themselves. So it's, it tends to be an elderly population and extremely low-income population.
Okay, okay, thank you. Mr. Branstadter?
Okay, Mr. Gumm, with those numbers, and those are specific to to the Councilmember Bokey's question about Oakleaf. So the project that we're looking at here is a construction project that spans two, in other words, Village Square and Oakleaf. That's not a single name of something that's too different, multifamily housing authority-owned project?
Correct, yes, it is.
So that's how we get to 64 U households?
Yes.
Maybe you could then remind me where they both are, because I had, I had a picture of where they were, but they, but I had, but it's one picture and I know not two.
Okay, see if I can remember their addresses exactly. So Village Square sits on 108th Street. Have to pull up the address, sorry. I should probably remember them. I visit them enough. So Village Square Apartments is 10810 Lakeview Avenue Southwest. So they are, they actually front Lakeview Avenue on the corner. The other one is on, I believe, 110th. The other one is Oakleaf. There we go, Oakleaf Apartments. Oakleaf Apartments is, oh, I was wrong. I don't know why I had that number. 9501. That's Village at Sealy Lakes. There it is. It's 110th. Sorry, 4111, 110th Street Southwest in Lakewood. So Oakleaf sits just north of the Pierce County Fire Station. And Village Square sits on 108th, nearly to the train crossing on 108th, about two blocks from the train crossing. So they're, I don't know, about 100 yards, maybe 150 yards away from each other. They sit very close to each other.
And they're located in the Lakewood Station District subarea?
They are.
Okay, thank you.
Any final questions for Mr. Gumm? Thank you very much for the update. We appreciate the work.
Thank you.
Back to you, Mr. Cawfield.
Thank you, Mayor. Next up, I'd like to call on our Public Works Engineering Director, Paul Buesich, to give you an update on the Clover Creek Engineering Alternative Study that him and his staff have initiated in partnership with a number of eight other agencies. If you didn't catch the TNT online this morning, there was actually an article on this initiative. So with that, Mr. Buesich?
Thank you. Good evening again. Over two and a half years ago, I brought forth to you the results of engineering study on the floodplain of Clover Creek. If some of you recall, that the end result of that modeling study showed that flooding was extensively more than what we thought it was going to be. And so we worked diligently with FEMA to determine what needed to be done as far as the update to the mapping. And when they came back to us and said, yeah, we can do all that. That looks great. Your model is great. But you need to identify the new floodway, which goes across the freeway. We said, whoa, 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 slow down. We're not quite ready to go that far, because that means all those properties and I-5 being in the floodway would have a considerable difficult time doing any, making any changes. So in consultation with the council and with your approval, we hired Brown and Caldwell last fall, last, actually in December, so I guess it's early winter, to start a process looking at the alternatives from an engineering perspective to reduce or alleviate the flooding. In the package that was sent out to you, there were two different graphics. First one does not show levy failure. The other one does show levy failure. It's an example of what the modeling work that we did shows how effective a levy can be. But if the levy is not built to FEMA standards, as far as they're concerned, it does not exist. We have initiated our work with our consultants. We had our first Stakeholders Group meeting, March 10th. We have our first public meeting on April 12th. We have a flyer that was also in your packet that we're working on. It should be pretty much in its final stages right now, and we'll be sending that out this week. We're stuffing envelopes on Wednesday, 570 of them. Then we're going to ship it out to residents who are within the potential impact zone of that flooding. That does not mean that all those residents are being flooded, but it means they're within the area that we've identified as likely to be affected by some form due to this flooding. Roads may be closed. They may not be able to get in and out. Schools may be closed. Bus routes may be closed. The sounder station may be shut down temporarily in this event because of water up against the tracks. The stakeholder group that we're working with are individuals from agencies and entities that have some direct play in the outcome of this. They have expertise and/or they have the ability to help us pursue future funding for whatever engineering alternative solution that we end up with is recommended. The list that in your packet shows that we've got state representatives from ecology, fish and wildlife, state transportation, DOT. We've invited JBLM, though they were unable to make it the last, in the first meeting. We have representation from the Nisqually Tribe. But because, unfortunately, because the gentleman we invited, and he said he would be there, has more than one email. He didn't see his other emails. He doesn't check it very often, but he says, I will be there in the future. Pilip Tribe of Nations has been participating in this. Sound Transit, Pierce Transit. I think I've got everybody, but I may have forgotten somebody. But we were very selective on this core group stakeholders, because we want to know from their perspective, from a regulatory perspective, are any of these solutions imfeasible? Do they have fatal flaws? Are there things that we don't know about that you could bring to the table to help us? I will say that our first meeting was successful in the regards that they all paid attention. They were all listening. They all heard us. They had some good questions. We were hoping that someone would have a brilliant idea on how to help solve this that we had not encountered before. We did not hear anything. But we will be coming back to them after the April meeting with the community to bring community thoughts on the problem we have out here. And then our first assessment of what we think are liable, likely alternatives from the engineering perspective. We know that things such as levies will work, floodwalls will work. They will involve property owners all the way up and down the creek, because you can't go do things in the creek, because we don't own the creek. It's private property. We need participation from all those property owners in order to make something happen. Previously, over 20 years ago, an assessment was done for a much minor, much smaller storm, the 1996 study or flood, that recommended a possibility of building a large pipeline to take the water down to Stillam Lake. And that was extremely expensive, but that will be one of the options we're looking at. One of the things we do have to look at and assess One of the things we do have to look at and assess is do nothing. And that, for all of our funding agencies and the environmental work that'll be necessary for any alternative, you have to have a do-nothing alternative. So that will move forward. And the way we will capture that is we will be identifying what are the impacts of do-nothing? How many properties are going to be impacted? What the traffic impacts are going to be? And what is the fiscal impact, not just to the city, but to the, to the entire community? I-5 being shut down with water across it for three to five days, seven days is not going to be an acceptable alternative for many people, I'm sure, and it's going to be very fiscally impactful. We've said before, I've said before this council before, that having all those cars divert from I-5 to go around this flooding area through the city of Lakewood is untenable. We can't handle, we can't handle that, that traffic load. It's a, it's a big enough issue that we have everybody's attention, and they are coming to the table to help us work through a solution. We have a schedule for the stakeholder meetings, and we also anticipate having another briefing to council later this summer as we get further along in the process. And then also a briefing to the community about what the outcome of these evaluations are. For our meeting on April twelfth, it is a little bit of a meet, meet and greet in that we want the community to know about the problem, answer the questions they may have about the problem, not be alarmist. This is a one percent probability storm or flooding event. Yes, we do have localized flooding in the ten and the fifty-year events. We know that, but they don't cross the freeway, and they don't get into the other areas. But we want people to understand what we're faced with out here. I've already received one call today from a nice lady who had read the article in News Tribune. She wanted to know where the properties were. She owns two properties, even though she lives down in Thurston County. I walked her through that, told her what was going on, and she was very appreciative. She was asking whether she needed to get a flood insurance. I said, "That's between you and your mortgage, uh, broker, or your, your mortgage lender. And if you don't have that, frankly, in this kind of a situation, if you're in a floodplain, it's always a good idea to have flood insurance, and it's relatively inexpensive as the grand scheme goes. That's why we have fire insurance. We have homeowners' insurance covers all these other things for the case that something may happen, because it's a low probability. Therefore, the insurance is usually pretty low." So that's where we are today, and that's our progress, and that's where we're going in the next month, month and a half. Be happy to ask any questions from the council.
Great update. Appreciate that. More to follow, it sounds like.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any else, Mr. Caulfield?
Uh, yes, just, uh, two quick updates. Just wanted to inform the council that last Wednesday, uh, city representatives led by our Parks and Recreation Director, Mary Dawsworth, met with, uh, representatives from the Nisqually Indian Tribe to, uh, discuss the various partnering projects at Fort Stillam Park. And, um, the, the, the group, uh, had a very, um, spirited discussion and identified a timeline and a, uh, way forward. Their next meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, April sixth. Actually, the city will be hosting this one at the pavilion at Fort Stillam Park. Uh, long story short, uh, between March and June, the goal is to essentially outline, you know, the, uh, development of what projects would move forward, um, in April through July, then develop, you know, site concepts and things along those lines, including cost estimates. And then in August and September, uh, finalize all of that, including potentially a state capital budget request, um, to help finance it, depending upon what the cost is. Uh, so again, it was, um, a very good, um, meeting, as Ms. Dawsworth reported out, and I know I talked to the, um, um, the, the CEO of the Nisqually Indian Tribe, and he too was very encouraged by, um, the upcoming meetings. So just wanted to just, uh, let you know, because that was an outlet, that was an outcome from your meeting with the tribal council. And then, um, just from a calendaring event, um, on, um, March thirtieth, which is, um, a week from Wednesday, um, Communities and Schools is having their Champions for Youth Breakfast at eight AM. It's a virtual event. If you'd like to, um, register for that. And then also later that afternoon, Community Healthcare is having their annual Lunch and Laughter event at the Hotel Murano. It's, actually, it'll be in person after a two-year hiatus. And then on Saturday and Sunday, April ninth and tenth, we'll be having our Spring Community Cleanup over at the Waste Connections, uh, Commercial Trans, Transfer Station. And, uh, just a friendly reminder, looking at some, looking for some volunteers, and I know councilmembers in the past have done that. So if you have an interest in volunteering for a couple of hours on one of those days, let us know. Be more than happy to accommodate you. So, um, with that, that's my report, Mayor.
Any questions for Mr. Caulfield? I understand, in addition to the Nisqually work with Parks Department, we're also going to get a overview from Pierce College on their anticipated work on the ballfields. Is that next study session?
Uh, yes, Mayor Whalen, I followed up with that last week, and so I believe it's on the calendar for, for next week as part of your study session.
So a lot of good things going on at the park. Okay, if there are no other further questions for Mr. Caulfield, I'll turn the council comments. Mr. Bokey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to update, uh, Thursday, the seventeenth, we had a PCRC meeting. Um, discussed a number of items. There's approval of six regional projects, uh, road projects. We didn't have one in there. These were big projects, and it included Canyon Road, Seventy-second Street to Pioneer, and Twentieth Street each, and Twentieth Street East in the Port of Tacoma, and there was a number of other ones. Um, the countywide planning policies are awaiting county council action. That's probably late May and early June. Um, and then they go out to a vote from all the cities, and just a reminder, it must be uh, sixty percent of the affected governments, and with a plus, uh, equals seventy-five percent of the population, which it was pointed out, both then the county and the city of Tacoma have veto power over, or Tacoma's right at about twenty-five percent. They are, uh, Josh Penner, who's the Chair of the, of the PCRC this year, and I believe he was last year, is looking at making some bylaw changes, and he, he went into a little bit of explanation. I'm not sure I'm quite following, but they are going to put an ad hoc committee together with Josh Penner from Boarding, um, Councilmember Green from Buckley, Councilmember Wook from Gig Harbor, and, uh, Councilmember Bushnell from Tacoma. So the, and I, and I'm looking now at Mr. Caulfield, because I'm sure our, uh, staff is all over this. Of course, we have the countywide road prog- or transportation funding process uh, early May, and, and for the applications, um, they're going to score them, and then they make their recommendations to the PCRC at the June meeting. So that'll be the third Thursday in June that we'll see those, um, for the countywide process and the scoring process. Talked a little bit about Vision Twenty-Fifty. That's still working its way, um. There's also a, a funding pro- the, the state just put out, they're, they're opening the funding process for Safe Routes to Schools that has nineteen million dollars in it, and the pedestrian bike and pedestrian bike program, eighteen million dollars. I have due May thirtieth, and I also have due June sixth. Our one, I think the Safe Routes to School applications are due June sixth, and the pedestrian bike program is due May thirtieth. So I just wanted to make that aware to you, Mr. Caulfield. I don't know what I don't think traditionally we've been involved in the pedestrian bike program, and I don't, I don't know the rules. I went and looked on it when I was on the meeting. The Safe Routes to Schools, we've been very successful on, so I don't know if we're going to, what we have in mind for those. But tha- that is coming up, and those are due in June, or one's due in June. Safe Routes to Schools is due June sixth. Pedestrian Bike Program applications are due May thirtieth, and that's on the State Department of Transportation website. I imagine everybody will speak to this. Um, loved the event on Saturday, um, for the time period I was there, so I'll just leave it at that. I thought it was very well organized and really brought in a, a different crowd, so I was really pleased with that and, um, re- really enjoyed it.
Thank you. Mr. Brandstetter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, 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 the, the proclamation that we did today regarding, um, you know, um, Women's History Month, um, you know, it, it, it concludes by us urging all residents to acknowledge and honor the contributions and accomplishments of women. And as our twenty-fifth anniversary, just a year ago, reminded me that there were many women that contributed to the accomplishments that we as a city have made since incorporation to be able to go, go and do that. And I think that that should be, uh, something that we should try to do what we told ourselves to do, is, is, is to get our communications folks to do some acknowledgement of, of some of those major contributions to the accomplishments of the city in twenty-five years and, and, and put them out there in, 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 in public view. And then, just even today, in, 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 yeah, internally within the city, from the executive leadership level on down to frontline folks, we have, uh, lots of women that are doing great things day in, day out, that, that, that make us the effective organization that we are. And, uh, and, and I would hope that we might find some way to do an expression of, uh, thanks and, 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 uh, um, and, and acknowledgement, uh, there to do that. I think there's, uh, you know, often in these proclamations, we call upon the residents of the city to do things, but this is one where there's also something that we ought to do something to. On Saturday, I did get a chance to, uh, go to the, the Real Ninety-Six, uh, event, and, uh, I went not knowing truly what to expect, um, that, um, it is, uh, was, uh, but, but it, but it wa- it wa- it was an event I enjoyed. Okay, I mean, the, the, the the films that were created were done really well with a lot of technical things and some really informally with uh, just an idea of wanting, 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 wanting to do something, um, that, um. But, uh, significant to me is that prior to the beginning of screening of the films, there was a couple of hours of, uh, going on, and I, I spent a portion of that time going to the individual tables where they, where there were teams and, and talked to them. And, uh, while, uh, internally on the city and on the Arts Commission, we were feeling good about the event, to be able to go and do that. I was glad to hear that uh, the folks that actually participated, uh, were really complimentary about how the event was organized and, 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 and put together, that, uh, some, some spoke to me comparatively about similar events within the region that, uh, were not done as well i- as ours. They all appreciated the having really clear guidance, uh, and then people staying out of your way and the guidance not changing, uh, after the fact. So, um, I, I, I think that, that, uh, well, I'm sure the Arts Commission will be doing a, uh, 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 an after-the-fact review to, to, to take a look at it. I, I certainly got the impression that it was, uh, really viable. I mean, uh, I, I, I shouldn't complain, because the, the judges chose films that wouldn't be the ones that I would choose with having no expertise. But, uh, you know, I, I, I thought, I thought it was a good event, and, 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 and had good community presentation. You know, we have, do a lot of events in the city, and the, uh, the, uh, and for many of them, the usual suspects show up. This was an event that had, uh, a lot of people that hadn't come to other things that we have, we have put together because it, it, it hit an interest group that was there. And so, uh, we should probably look at doing the things over there. And I would also say that the teams were, um, representative of, 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 of the diversity of our city and of our region. I mean, there, 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 there were, there were filmmakers from different ethnicities and, 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 and other groups to, to be able to go and do that. And some of, and there were some of that in the themes of some of the, the films that were there. So, uh, there's certainly kudos that, that need to go out to the people that spent a long time putting that together. And, um, I look forward to going to another one.
Great. Councilmember Farmer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also wanted to, uh, thank you for the opportunity to do the Women's History Month proclamation. I very much enjoyed that, and I wanted to give a shout out to Holly Bokey from the Clover Park School District, who helped me, uh, contact all of the schools and, and round up our contingent for this evening. I'm hoping that we can get copies of the proclamation to the two students who are unable to make it. Appreciate that. All right. That's it for me.
Councilmember Bell.
Okay, thank you. I just also wanted to comment on, uh, the Real Ninety-Six. Uh, it was wonderful. I think that Linda McDermott from the Arts Commission deserves huge amount of kudos for that, and also our Parks staff, uh, coming in. And I think it was a great example of showing how art can really bring the community together, and that there's all different ways and different viewpoints, and brings in all the diversity from everywhere. I just really think it was an amazing, amazing event. I also really appreciated the sponsorship from the local, um, businesses that also just shows so much support for our community and how much they really believe in Lakewood and what we're doing here. So that's it for me. Thank you.
Mr. Anderson.
Yes, I, I enjoyed, uh, having a, a young woman here for the proclamation. I thought that was a great touch. You know, Mayor Whalen and I share the hashtag #GirlThat, and, uh, wear it proudly. And I, I have, for the last probably thirty years, used the phrase that, that's now so it's archaic, because nobody knows who they are anymore, but that, uh, Ginger did everything Fred did backwards and in high heels. That was kind of my mantra to my girls growing up, and so it's nice to see, um, things like that happen. Unrelated to city business, uh, but indicative of our relationship with JBLM. City Manager and I, um, met with our, our, uh, American Lake Veterans Golf Course hats on with the Garrison Commander, Command Sergeant Major, Public Works Director, Assistant Public Works Director, and MWR reps, regarding real estate issues out there. But I think it's indicative of the relationship the city of Lakewood has with the base that, uh, they, the, kind of the powerhouse of the base administration is willing to sit down and and, uh, work cooperatively with, uh, us because we have a trusting relationship. Tuesday, tomorrow, we have a Parks and Rec Advisory Board meeting, and on Thursday, I get the great pleasure of participating in the future council meeting. So.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Moss.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too wanted to, uh, say I was happy with the proclamation and the receipt of the young lady that was here today. That's something that I think that we can do more of when we have the opportunity to, because it's a motivation for our young people to see their peers gaining, uh, notoriety, notoriety. So, thank you for that. I, um, I did not get to attend the event on Saturday, however, I did participate in the clam chowder cook-off at, uh, Ocean Shores, and I have had enough of clam chowder for a while. I also had an opportunity, I had an opportunity to meet with the mayor of, uh, I also had an opportunity, I had an opportunity to meet with the mayor of, uh, Ocean Shores and to chat for us for minutes. And he was very appreciative that Lakewood was represented at his festival. It was a razor, the annual razor festival, clam, the annual razor clam chowder festival, which was a surprise. We didn't know that was happening when we got there. So, but it was really good, but some of the chowder was really different. Thank you.
Well, thank you. I just want to extend appreciation for the proclamation tonight. Again, to Councilmember Farmer for really pushing that forward. It's, uh, a long time overdue, but I also appreciate Mr. Branstadter's comments about so many, uh, incredible women who helped with Cityhood and got this city to the point where it is. I'll just remember some names for the record. It would be great to kind of highlight them in this, this month, recognizing the contributions of so many women like Ann Kirk Davis, Cherry Thomas, Andy Gurnan, Claudia Thomas, Helen McGovern, and Alice Bush, our first cook, and Joethel Smith, who's done so much work in the city and continues to do work in the city, uh, with our Martin Luther King Committee. So, so many, uh, fine people have done so much to allow us to continue the good work that they started. So, thank you, Mr. Branstadter, for that. The Real Ninety-Six event, again, uh, kudos to Linda, who put it on. She just did a fabulous job leading the Arts Commission and Sally Martinez with the staff support. The thing that was amazing to me, uh, that many of you have commented was it was an opportunity to bring in a whole different variety of folks to the city to see something cool and fun. And to watch people have a great opportunity to interact with one another, enjoy the McGavick Center, which looks beautiful. And it was nice for those of us who haven't been around other people for the last two years to actually get around other people and, and chat and communicate and, you know, have a laugh or two at some of the really fun, uh, videos that were done. So kudos to them. They've come a long way. You've seen the raps around the street on the various power boxes. They're looking fabulous. They want to do more of that. They're excited about the public art piece coming in hopefully August. And they're working hard to, to bring that to fruition. So I'm hopeful that, uh, the community at large recognizes the work that they're trying to do. You know, good, um, vibrant cities have culture and art. And these folks are doing a lot for all of us to try to make that happen. So I, I thank them for that. I remind folks about the Coffee House, uh, Community Coffee House on Thursday at the Pavilion in the Park. It's from six to seven thirty. The topic this time is community policing and public safety. I will have Chief Zarro there to present kind of an overview, the twenty twenty-one year in review. Uh, he's going to talk about the legislative changes, uh, both two years ago and recently, and how that may or and has, uh, impacted the job, uh, of our officers. He will discuss the, uh, the hiring that we've just done. And I've also asked our municipal court judge, Lisa Mansfield, to present, uh, a bit from her perspective about how public safety and community policing and the integration of the court system, uh, is working, uh, in twenty twenty-one and hopefully in twenty twenty-two and beyond. And I believe we may even have a guest appearance from the other side, the prosecutorial side. Uh, Heidi Walker may, uh, come and, and present a little bit. So it'll be a, a good opportunity to have a forum and a Q and A with folks who really know what's going on, both on the charging side, the court side, and certainly the policing side. And I hope that members of the public come with their questions. It'll be an opportunity to have some, uh, back and forth interaction that we want to be constructive and positive. And hopefully people will leave there with, you know, having had a cup of coffee, maybe a good piece of dessert, right, Ms. Schumacher? And, uh, some information they might not have otherwise known. So if you can make it, please do so. Uh, we should have room for fifty or sixty. And even Mr. Caulfield will save you a piece of cake. Anything else for the good of the order? Mr. Bokey.
I do have one item. Um, so our five hundred thousand dollars of ARPA money that's going to go for Business Accelerator. That shows up actually as a grant to the county and the grant was presented today as study session. It'll be on their consent agenda and the council, county council would like to express their, uh, thanks to the, the city of Lakewood for adding those five hundred thousand dollars to the five million that the county is putting in. It'll actually allow them to work with forty additional businesses, um, over, over the timeframe, which is, is, I guess, for the year. So, um, yeah, they, they wanted to express their thanks for that.
Mr. Anderson.
Comment on that. I, I can, I can attest to the fact that the Director of Economic Development for Pierce County had already reached out to, uh, Lakewood, uh, community organizations and, and prospective trainers for these, this program, almost immediately after it was proposed. So it was, it was a starting point, not a finishing point for the administrative effort. So, uh, we'll, we'll get our buddies' worth out of it.
Great. I don't see that we have need for an executive session tonight, so with no further ado. Sure.